For the town of Acton, Maine, first item is salute the flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll second that.
Moved in second in a discussion. Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 23rd and April 30th minutes.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve April 23rd and April 30th. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, department heads and committee chair updates. And we have planning board.
Joyce Backshee, planning board chairman. To the town of Acton Board of Selectmen, May 7th, 2019. The planning board update. Since reporting to the Board of Selectmen on March 12th, 2019, planning board members addressed the following issues. A second modification to a site plan review, application to establish a warehouse/boat storage dock showroom on 109. Two site visits have been conducted. The board has accepted the application and a public hearing has been scheduled. A preliminary report from Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission regarding the proposed 29-lot subdivision on Young Ridge Road has come in. We are waiting to have discussion with them on what they've, their conclusions. A conceptual plan outlining a proposed non-for-profit, no-kill dog rescue facility on 109 that would shelter a maximum of 50 dogs at one time has been given to us. The proposed plan includes establishing a mini golf and ice cream shop to generate revenue for said establishment. A conceptual plan outlining a proposed event facility on Harper Road that would offer hosting large events, including weddings, corporate functions, farm-to-table dinners, and minimum lodging, has come before us. Again, a conceptual plan. A conditional use permit application to establish a home daycare operation on Milton Mills Road is before us. A site visit was conducted. The application was accepted and a public hearing has been scheduled. The board has requested copies of the application submitted to the state. An extractive use permit application on 11th Street. Two site visits were conducted. A graded and revegetation, that's a good one, revegetation plan were submitted and approved. A public hearing has been scheduled. Modification of an existing approved conditional use permit allowing hosting of outdoor events. The property owner is requesting to convert an existing barn to host small indoor events. A site visit has taken place. Best practical location permit to renovate more than 50% of assessed value of a structure on Motha Horn Road was approved. In our workshops, definitions within the subdivision regulations have been and are being reviewed. A little sideline, we find that definitions can be, can lead to a plethora of problems. Ongoing workshops have scheduled on alternate Wednesdays to review the town subdivisions, zoning ordinance, and comprehensive plan. The public is invited and encouraged to attend. Also, in order to ensure that our review of site plan, the review of the site plan reviews, conditional use subdivision, and good neighbor applications are thorough and consistent, board members are working with the building department staff to develop a comprehensive checklist. As a reminder, planning board meetings are held on the first and third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM in the planning board meeting room. Again, the public is encouraged and invited to attend any and all of these meetings. If you have any questions? And I would like to ask our planning board member, could you come up? Mr. Mahoney, if you would? We have a question for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gavin Maloney, I'm on the planning board. The land use department and the planning board, we're just discussing some ideas and we realized that the meeting room downstairs where we meet doesn't have a existing name right now. It's other than the basement. And we were thinking it would be great to have a name for it. And so I guess I'm coming to you to ask the selectmen's help in appropriating some funds. We'd like to put up a plaque and name the meeting room after Thomas A. Cashin. I'm just thinking like a simple, you know, one of the simple metal plaques with the wooden back. I'm not exactly sure what the cost would be. I was hoping to have some sort of number for you tonight, but can just ask for your, just to think it over and see, you know, see what you come up with. And I'm sure someone can come up with an estimate for you from the planning board if that's necessary.
Actually, the planning board has said that we would be happy to cover that cost as, from our pockets. Each member, Thomas is such a valuable member, that there's very little we could do for him. So, there wouldn't be a cost to the town. Because we want him to come back and want him to stay with us. Gavin just had a great idea naming that for him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like the idea.
All right, thank you.
Under old business for discussion next week?
Yeah, please.
Yep.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other department heads, committee chairs? Okay, moving on to old business. E-911, addressing operator.
Nothing new to report.
7th Street.
So, we're going to talk about the warrant and the road committee a little later on, but I did get from Mr. Cody who's heading the 7th Street, the letter from the engineer that we needed. I have spoken to the prior road commissioner that covered that area that did all the inspections, and he certainly gives it the go. I know that the current road commissioner met with Mr. Cody during the winter months, so haven't really spoke to him about it, but it looks like, assuming the changes the road committee pass, we have put 7th Street on the warrant.
Great. Okay. Road Commissioner and Road Committee ordinances.
All right, so the easier one first, which is going to be the road committee. And as I understand it, the road committee is having a meeting afterwards, so we will... Leslie, actually, if you want to take one of these now, Leslie, in case I make any changes, you could have that, and then we can make you some copies between meetings. That's all I have on me.
That's an action.
So, since the last public hearing, public this, public that, the only change, and this is a draft that Leslie and I actually worked on, the only concern that came from the road committee was that the current members that were previously elected to the committee, it was kind of dissolving and starting over. So, we reached out to legal and said, you know, what's the best way to handle this? And they basically said that they could argue it either way. And it was really the board's decision. So, from my understanding, the board didn't have any concerns with leaving them in there. So, the only paragraph that has changed is the organizational structure and meeting. So, maybe one of you want to read that out loud, see how it flows?
The structure?
Yes.
Okay. The committee will be formed of seven members. Five members elected at an annual town meeting, three of which shall serve for a three-year period, two members shall serve for a two-year period. The other two members shall be the current elected road commissioner of each district. And in parentheses, the two-year members shall take effect after the expiration of the two currently sitting road committee members with identical terms at the time of this adoption. Five members will be elected at an annual town meeting, all of which will be three-year terms. Members with unexpired terms shall complete their original terms thereafter, being elected to a three-year term.
So, the road committee can discuss that at their meeting and get back to us?
Well, there's a little conflict. I think we didn't, we just didn't pull out that one part where it's, it says, three shall serve for a three-year period and two shall serve for a two-year period.
Oh, because...
Although it says...
All of which will be three.
So, I think that just needs to come out.
So, five members elected at annual town meeting, period?
Period.
Or we almost, we don't even need that in there because it says it down there.
Right.
So, five members elected at the annual town meeting, three of which, that whole line is coming out.
Yeah, that's just the extra verbiage that we...
But then that's got to move up because you can't start the sentence with the other two.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll just take that sentence out and move the other one up.
So, it's going to read, the committee will be formed of seven members, five members will be elected at the annual town meeting, all of which, all of which will be three-year terms. And then we're going to say the other two, right?
Yep.
Picks up there?
Yep.
That makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
What?
All of which...
Rollin?
Will be a three-year term. The other two members shall...
We are staggering it based on the two positions that are currently elected. We did this this way intentionally so that they would stagger. Mm-hmm.
Five members elected at an annual town meeting, all of which will be three-year terms.
So, we have the, their committee will review it. We still have the public hearing on Monday. The board can take a final look at it, but that one should be done unless we hear differently from the road committee, or they want us to just look for things.
Okay. Let's start with that?
Yep.
Committee, so road commissioner.
So, it's not quite as easy. These are, these three are the old ones. These three are the new ones. Unless I missed it in the email, which I was going to peek at real quick, he generally sends me a red line version. Let me just make sure that I didn't miss it because we really got this just...
Jen?
Yes?
Do you have another one of these? I can give you that back.
Thank you. Brad, Brad, Brad. So, this is in a red line, which means, here we go, Jennifer, here are the proposed provisions, okay. All right, so he spelled them out in the email.
I thought we changed, I thought we put...
So, he changed, he changed some things. So, I sent...
So, he took eminent out and put that.
He, so you have, the one with the, the one with the water draft is yours.
Okay.
I sent that to him per your instruction. And what I got back was the one that has no water draft, and you will notice that the format is different.
Yes.
Okay. Article 1 introduction, section 1 authority, okay. So, this is, I'm going to just read you the email so you can come across with it. So, Jennifer, here are the proposed provisions to the ordinance. They capture the provisions from state law so that they were all in one place. I've got one, Leslie, if you want to follow along as the chair. No, actually, I've got a few. Look at that. Those are the new ones. Actually, leave me one in case I know what I'm talking about. Thank you. Okay, so it says paragraphs 3 and 11. Paragraphs 3 and 11. Amended paragraph to better conform with the state statute. Paragraphs 20 through 23 simply, to simplify and conform with the statutory provision. Paragraph 24, added a catch-all to incorporate all statutory sections that apply to road commissioners and town, maintenance of town ways. So, I guess what I would recommend that you do is...
When he says paragraph, does he mean line?
You know as much as I do, I just got this. So, what I was going to say is if you want to take this home, look over the next day or two, the road committee will pass them out and they can look at them as well. The public hearing is not until Monday. So, Monday, we can discuss any, any issues with the attorney's recommendation, and then by Tuesday, you'll have to vote to move them forward. But as I understood it, he was just adding the proper statutes in. And I'll forward you this email as well so you can cross-reference it.
Thank you.
I will also see if I can get my hands on a red line copy sometime. All right, so we're just going to, want to wait and go through those?
Yep.
Yeah, because I actually found a change in section 2, number 3, and 4. If you can compare 3 and 4 to the new one.
The other one on the driveways, it's changed now, I see, number 21, which is good. Because it said before that if the driveway was approved, that the road commissioners had to do it, but I see you pulled it, it's been pulled out, so.
I haven't personally made any changes to this.
But it's been changed, you know, so.
Yeah, he said he lined it up with state statute. Good on that? Like I said, it just, just came in, so. Need a chance to cross-reference it.
What's up?
What's up? I am.
Okay. Next one is paving bid.
So, both road commissioners have reviewed the paving bid. As we heard Mr. Langley tell us last week that it was good to go as presented, Mr. Luterno gave me the same okay, but then I got an email from Langley saying, add in all these things. I think I CC'd you guys and said that I missed something. So, I was kind of confused on what the change was. I know he wasn't able to make it to tonight's meeting, but what I've done is sent his changes now to Joe so that he can look at them, and hopefully we can incorporate it and get that out soon.
I'm wondering if you might be better off just getting bids per road? Never mind having...
A whole year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if we know we got a road, XYZ road, from point to point, just have three companies bid that.
Do you know what roads both sides are going to pave, even with an election pending?
No, they'll, well, they'll have to tell us what ones they want to pave. I don't know if there's any...
So, we wouldn't be able to do it until after the election?
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have, you're going to have money sitting there to do paving, but rather than trying to get this big elaborate...
You saw, yeah.
Yeah, that we may or may not use nine-tenths of it.
Right.
Just do it by road.
Yeah, that's...
Project, yeah.
Yeah, do it by project.
I can reach out to both of them tomorrow, and it's tough with Dave because we know that no matter what happens, but let me, let me get some feelers out with the candidates and the other road commissioner.
We got what, New Bridge Road that needs attention?
East Shore.
East Shore.
But those are both on the, on the side, the election sitting side.
Yeah.
Right, so we don't know.
No, but we also know they need attention, though.
Right.
So...
Right, because the board can encourage project.
Yeah, yeah, so, and there's others, but I mean, you're not going to get them all done with the money we have, but...
Okay.
I don't know, I just thought I'd bring it up to the board and see what you think.
And if it is all on one side, I feel like that's why we would sit down together, treat the town as one, and divvy it up.
How would that work if, if the town votes to approve money on one side, you know, 90%, 90,000 on one side and 90 on the other, but we want to move money from one side to the other? Is that possible?
I'd have to look at how the warrant article was written, which article, do you have a particular article that you're looking at?
No, just whichever one would have, would, would do the...
I mean, if that's something you want, let me...
It's just a thought.
Is the district defined somewhere in writing somewhere?
Does it define by district, or is it...
I believe your paving money is, and I can find the article. So, fire rescue, fire rescue, all right, roads. So, we have public safety, we have the hourlies. Yeah, so, that's the L-RAP and the servicing and reconstruction, right? That's the paving, yeah.
On the right, yeah.
There are two different articles. So, Article 33 is to raise and appropriate for District 1, Article 34 is to raise and appropriate for District 2, so.
So, you couldn't move from one to the other.
Not if the voters vote on them like that.
That's going to be, yep.
You'd have to change the warrant articles.
Well, we have to change that one anyways. Why don't we take the paving out and make it one line?
Do we have to change that?
Yeah.
We're going to talk about changing it.
Okay, okay, well, we'll talk about it when we get there. Okay. Okay, well, just pass that information on to the two and we'll see what they come back with. Okay, oh, look, warrant updates.
Skip.
Okay.
Okay. So, warrant and finance met last night, well, actually, let me back up. So, just an update from last week, I think I've told both, all of the board members, code enforcement slash planning board did decide, so after the meeting last week, code enforcement realized that one of the major change that he presented to the board had actually already been done the year before. It was just, the office did not update it in their copy, so...
Okay.
So, they took that off, and as I understood, the other ones, the change in the amount of mineral extraction, they said could wait.
Okay.
So, there is no other zoning ones on here?
Yep, so those are being recanted.
Yep. All right, so warrant and finance. So, they decided to, so they tabled 5 and 6 because they want to hear the public hearings. Trying to think what other changes. They made some, some, some of their recommendations were a little different than your recommendations, but they were pretty similar. The road article is the one we want to get to, right? We can't find it, we're just... Oh, yeah, so we're on page 6. So, 22, they did vote on, so they're all set with that, and they voted on 23. We need to start talking about the gym. I think that all three of you were still present with the gym. Put it on next week's, next week's agenda, but start thinking about what you want to do July 1. I'm going to try to run some scenarios for you as far as how much we would have to increase the current population use of the gym to cover what we believe might be the expenses so that you can think about how you want to proceed with that. Okay, so, it was articles 33 and 30, no, wait a minute, 33 and 34? Thanks, Rollin. All right, so, just to kind of update the public what happened last night. So, 33, I think the motion came to approve the, approve it as written after some discussion. 34, they discussed putting some sort of statement in the article as far as wanting a line item budget for District 2 prior, before the funds being released. After conversation, I think they kind of realized that we don't in fact have a line item budget from either one. We may have one side that, you know, presented a little more, you know, a little more detail in what he believed he was going to do, having a little more time and experience on the job, whereas the other one was waiting for, you know, snow and ice and everything to melt to see really what the roads looked like. You know, he hadn't spent the last so many years traveling the roads, maybe as much as the first one. So, after we had that conversation as a group, I think there was some talk about maybe the Board of Selectmen rewording those articles to incorporate something about a project list of some extent. So, that's what I told them I'd bring up tonight.
Well, it makes sense, especially because with District 1 being elected in mid-June, they, they may have a different project list than what the interim road commissioner's coming up with right now.
Right, and I think that's what we talked about last night, that, you know, we appreciate David and all of the, you know, work done and what he presents, but at the end of the day, you know, it may, you know, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't matter either way.
Right.
Because he's not running for the seat. So, what kind of wordage are you trying to, what are you thinking you want to put in there?
Something to the extent where it's not appropriated until after a project list with a line item budget per project is, is produced and...
All right.
I don't want to say approved with the selectmen, but at least conversed with the...
Presented?
Presented.
Yeah, reviewed by...
Reviewed, yeah.
So, you want that in the actual article, right? Not any recommendation, so.
And that'll give District 2 more time to figure out what his roads look like for planning.
All right, so I guess I would, I would probably end, I'd probably end the sentence at, under, after roads, so, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate blank, blank, with state L-RAP funds for District 1 roads, and then put in something like, you know, said funds to be dispersed after... And then, and then, you know, end it with saying, and, to be expended as follows. Do you know what I mean? So, we're just, if we end the sentence under roads and then just continue, say, said, said funds to be dispersed... After...
A project...
Project list and line item budget.
After a project list...
With.
With.
Lists including line item budgeting. Line item budgeting. Said funds to be dispersed after a project list, including line item budgeting...
Has been presented.
Has been presented...
To the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen. Said funds to be dispersed after a project list, including line item budgeting, has been presented to the Board of Selectmen. And we're putting that in both articles.
Yes. Now, is this, is this where we might want to combine the surfacing?
Whatever you would like to do. We, I mean, if you, if you decide you want to do that, I'm thinking maybe even another article, so you want to leave the winter maintenance and the summer maintenance separate like that?
Yep.
Could we include those in Article 35? Move, move the wording from that down.
Shared road, I see.
The shared road.
Okay, so 35 is a shared account. You want to make the road surfacing and reconstruction a shared account?
Well, it would have to be if we're going to do it, if we're going to be able to use the money between the two districts.
I just don't feel like the, the districts are created equally in needing pavement or resurfacing.
And who's going to monitor this?
Right, I was going to say, who's going to decide when you have two of the road commissioners?
Well, I think that you would have the road committee, the selectmen, and the road commissioners. Using the RSMS system would be a collaborative decision so that...
Tell me how you'd like me to word it, well...
Well, could, would that go in, could that possibly go in the ordinance? The road commissioner ordinance?
No, you have to pull the money out of here.
This is definitely the place. I mean, we have, but we have to change all the numbers, so, because, I mean, you almost need, you almost need a whole other article, because I don't know, you know what I mean?
Right.
You need to, the resurfacing, I mean, you could move the resurfacing down if you think that's a good idea to 35.
What about just keeping it in its own, have its own?
It could be.
Well, if you put it in its own article, it's going to shift everything, and Warren and Finance has already made a ton of recommendations because this deadline was months ago.
All right. Thank you.
So, if...
I mean, I guess the other question is...
I mean, you don't think...
Is District, does District 1 and District 2, do you, do, I mean, they, they have their roads, but is that set in stone somewhere that District 2's resurfacing can only be spent in District 2, and what is District 2?
Well, the way the warrant article is, yes, that's the only way you can spend it. Now, determining who decided what District 1 and District 2 was, I mean, that question's come up before, and, you know, we've got to go back in town, town records, I mean, long before, you know, I mean, I'm guessing, I'd have to, you know, I'd have to do some serious research. I have no idea when those, I mean, the names that I hear back, and I guess I'd reach out to Dennis, as far as I can think back with the road commissioners, it's always been two sides. Do you remember it ever being one district?
No, it's, they dropped it from 3 to 2.
What year roughly?
3.
Okay, so, if it was, so if we know that it went from 3 to 2, it was what?
Victor Me was a selectman.
Okay, so we think that it happened at a town meeting or at a selectmen's meeting?
That, I couldn't tag it. It was a thing to equalize the mileage...
Right.
For the summertime because of the state, two state roads. So, for a long time, the north end had a...
And you should be up here because I can, Dennis, I'm sorry, I can hear Barbara yelling at me. Sorry, Barbara.
I'm positive Victor Me was a selectman at the time, and it was shortly after Girden King got elected.
So, if you had to give me some rough years?
I would say it's in the early 80s.
That sounds about right.
And anyway, the mileage was a lot more, obviously, on the north end of the town than it was on the south end of town. So, the road budget was higher on the north end of town and tried to equalize the amount of money for really summer work. That's when Young's Ridge, Hawn's Pawn and all that, they changed that to the southern district.
So, without spending a whole lot of time on it, I mean, we can, I can have one of the girls look, I mean, look through some selectmen minutes... one of the girls look, I mean, look through some selectmen minutes and, and just see what the conversation was, and, you know, maybe look through some town meeting minutes, um, but I don't think that it's something that we're going to be able to, to answer right on the spot, as far as how to go about changing.
So then the other way you could do it, I guess we'd have to hear from both road commissioners. What does District One have that needs to be paved? What does District Two?
But I'm.
Historically, Ed, when, when this happened years ago, uh, because we were really in the same boat, because we used to have a lot of this estate was taken care of, uh, in paving, and, uh, what they did that year, uh, when we had a big problem on the south end of town, about like we have now, um, the, then they used to call it North and South, uh, the northern district gave up their paving.
Yep.
Uh, for that year, and they spent all the paving money on the southern district.
That's what I'm getting at.
That's what they did.
I mean, and, and I, you know, at the same time, I mean, you've got brand new road commissioner. We know we're going to have a new road commissioner on one side, we've got another road commissioner, we haven't even given them a chance to.
Right.
Look over their sides and determine what needs to be done, and we're already talking about combining and taking away their paving. I mean, I think that, you know, you might want to give it a year or so, and you've got a list here of paving projects and line item budgets. We don't know what, you know, we don't know what Mr. Luterno thinks, and we can't really reach out to the other side, because it's an election.
Right.
I don't think that one year is going to hurt as far as, you know, letting them get their feet wet and decide what roads they think need to be paved.
Okay.
And they're the experts, right?
True.
True.
So let's not, let's not stat that.
Rollin'.
Rollin', enough.
Just a thought. That puts more in there than you've had in the past.
Yeah.
That at least gets you the projects and that gets you the line item. If you find over a year or so that, you know, it's still not balancing, you know, then look into it in advance a little more, and we can.
Okay.
You know, but give them a chance, is my thought.
Yep.
All right, so we'll put that in both of those road, uh, the warrant and finance will look at it again, I think, oh, um, where did I lost my agenda? So we can kind of jump into the road ordinance at the same time, because it's kind of in the warrant. So if you flipped, uh, the second to last page there, or I'm sorry, page seventeen, make that sixteen at the beginning. So per your instruction, um, the whole ordinance is in here, but on page seventeen, and Leslie, this is what I need your committee to look at tonight as well. So two A is the section that's been changed. That's the blurb that, um, Mr. Lenkowski recommended be put in, in regards to the thirty-four foot right away in the, yep, it's in the warrant, I'm sorry, I thought you had one. Yeah, right here. So if you go to page seventeen. All right, where are we, fifteen? Okay, so we're starting right here. All right, so two A is the major change. That blurb is taken directly from Lenkowski to, um, assist Seventh Street, but also many other private roads, um, per his belief. You're going to see that all the letters there, see that A through K is all underlined? That is underlined because I'm changing it from numbers to letters, because, so that was just clarity, so there are no other changes. But if you flip the page, and this is where the conversation takes place, put a little mark right there, Leslie, where it says procedure for the creation of roads. So this is where we're getting different opinions on what this means. So I'm going to offer you a, a change and see if it's something you want to do, or if you feel it's clear. So in dealing with Seventh Street, the, the question keeps coming up as to whether or not three A and three B pertain to somebody wanting to be a Class B road. If you go back to Class B road, it clearly says, "private roads which are not subject to general provisions may be, you know, may be defined and reconstructed and become a Class B road." So one of your attorneys believes that everything there from two down to K, that's all they have to do to become a Class B. The other attorney believes this does say procedure for creation of a road. You're creating a town road, although it was kind of already there, but I'm not going to argue that. So see where B says the road commissioner and engineer shall inspect. One of your attorneys and prior road commissioners believe that you should add the word "new" in on number three. So it would read procedure for the creation of a new road, so that we wouldn't be interpreting if A and B pertain to any of these class A, B, or C roads. Do you understand the difference? So that's something for you to think about. And the other piece is under B, three B, the suggested change, if you read it now, it says, "the road commissioners," plural, "and an engineer shall inspect the road." They believe, some people believe that should only be one road commissioner, because, you know, Billy doesn't need to come on Johnny's side of the sandbox, Johnny should know best. You, maybe you intended on it to be road commissioners before my time. So those two things, if the road committee could discuss those possibilities of those two and what they think of it, um, and the board, we can kind of get together verbally, you know, one-on-one before the public hearing Monday. So I can make the final documents, and we'll wait to hear what you guys think about those two.
With all the controversy that there's been over the road ordinance and the number of roads that have wanted to apply, um, I would hope that we could take a little time to let other roads also be on the list for this warrant. Buzzles been waiting for a very long time, and, uh.
Who are we talking about?
We're talking about the road ordinance, and you're talking about putting one road, changing the road ordinance for one road, where many others have, have been waiting for a long time. I'm totally in favor of Seventh Street, but I, I think Buzzle needs to come back in the picture too.
Well, we'll let Buzzle come before.
If Buzzle wants to come before us, that's up to Buzzle.
Yeah, they've been here quite a bit.
Well, they, I don't think they've ever turned in a petition as stated in Class B with all of those listing out like Seventh Street did. So, you know what I mean, if you look at the Class B road listing.
Yeah.
We don't have anything pending like that from Buzzles Road.
Okay, but if something does come up for you, we'll consider it at the same time, right?
I can't imagine they would put it on this year's warrant, they don't have time.
Not this year's warrant.
No, not this year.
Okay.
This year is done.
But it would be something they need to get, get moved.
Yeah. Seventh Street, Seventh Street turned this in three months ago.
Oh, I know, they've worked hard, they've done a beautiful job, they've spent a lot of money, and I'm totally in favor of them being accepted. I'm just saying there are other roads out there too that have waited a long time.
Hopefully they'll turn the paperwork in, and the board can look at them.
Yep.
So we don't have anything on any other road.
No.
No.
Just looking down through this, where we were talking about, you know, the road commissioners, everything else down on that page refers to as road commissioner.
Yes, that's what.
So I think it may be, I mean, road commissioner would make sense to me.
And that's what the, both attorneys agreed to that piece of it, so.
Yep, so, okay. Anything else in this?
Um, those are the only two things. I mean, I understood it to be such short notice and putting this on there that we weren't looking to rewrite it all, so I hope the road committee doesn't go back, um, and do that tonight, but those were the couple of minor things that the attorney pointed out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. So we're going to. Okay, so that's it for that for now. Anything else on that?
No.
Okay. Keep it handy, we'll need it later. Okay, road ordinance.
Uh, we kind of covered that all together?
Yep, we did. Calcium fluoride.
I just wanted to let you know from follow-up from last week, um, did speak to the property owner that had concerns with his product, and he has withdrawn all of his concerns and said that he was all set.
Okay, so we can take that right off of old business.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to new business, warrant recommendations.
All right, so we have a fresh copy in front of you. Um, I guess, starting with, I thought maybe, I don't, I mean, maybe it would be easier to have a kind of conversation, you guys wrote this as a group. I mean, are there certain articles that you have concerns with, um, you know, that you want to talk about individually? After the zoning of ten, I think eleven through. Eleven through twenty-three are housekeeping. If any words changed in them, obviously you guys made the change.
Right.
Um, you've been with the show every step along the way, yep. Are you prepared to make a recommendation on the timber harvesting, or do you want to attend the public hearing on Thursday?
I'm not going to be able to do that.
No.
But Ken came and presented, do you have any concerns?
I don't.
All right, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Article Ten as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve Article Ten. Any further discussion?
I think you did a good job explaining.
Okay.
Nope.
In that case.
Nope.
Call for a vote. Gavin, I guess only because you are a member, are you up for a member of the?
You guys are going to make a recommendation, I think, on Thursday night, is it, no?
Well, so I contacted the Chair of the Forest Committee, who is, uh, Mr. Bodkin, and he told me he would bring it before the committee. I haven't heard back from him.
I, I wasn't trying to interrupt the proceedings right then, I just, um, wanted to, uh, make sure that the planning board had their recommendation where it says, "selectmen recommend," warrant and finance recommends, that it says, "planning board recommends."
For the.
For the, uh, the pertinent articles, which in this case would be the timber harvesting.
Okay, so I thought, I thought you would ask for the Forest and Conservation Committee to give a recommendation, not planning board.
Well, the, the timber harvesting, um, article is all, um, mostly omissions from the, the definitions in the zoning ordinance, and so that is planning board material. Um, but of course, I, I, I wouldn't object to having the Forestry and Conservation Commission put a recommendation on any article that pertained to them as well.
So again, I mean, we can table it for next week's discussion, I mean, we've got code enforcement and nothing, you know, we, it's not the Chair of the Planning Board, we've never had planning board recommendations on any zoning before, so.
Oh, no.
It's not that it's not a good idea, I just, they, you know, I mean, you got to, you got to look into it and decide how you want to handle it. And you can change the policy to start doing that going forward, if that's on.
I was looking through the old warrant articles from the last twenty years, and the planning board has made multiple recommendations that have been listed at the town meeting, and it was just a couple of years ago, they were, just last year, they, they didn't appear on there, um, and I'm not sure why, why they were taken off. But we have been on there for quite some time.
Let me pull up a couple and take a peek at them, because as long as we've been doing the warrants, so, let's see, so let's just go to a random one, June, we'll do, June thirteenth of fifteen, there must be some sort of. All right, let's see, how to find a zoning. June of fifteen, we didn't vote on any zoning, let's pick another year.
We don't have to go through it tonight, I can, I can bring in the, I can bring in the examples, if you like.
Yeah, I have them all here.
So you're, I'm just kind of wondering.
Do we need both?
You had, did you have a meeting on this downstairs and then approved for it to come up on the warrant? Is it approved someplace else?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we just need to have our hearing.
You just want it. Okay.
Which is on the sixteenth, I think, of this month.
Is it the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, we've already voted, the planning board has already had the vote, I think it was unanimous.
Yeah, they would have done that back in February before they moved it forward to the board.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
But not on warrants.
Okay.
We don't put, we haven't.
But I, I can bring an example in. All right, thank you.
Okay, so you want to table that then, or do you want to?
Yeah, I do.
So are you tabling your vote?
No.
No.
No, no, please roll over.
Nope, okay, so we'll vote on that one, okay. Okay, so it's moved and seconded to approve the Article as written, for the selectmen's recommendations. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay. Okay. So. The rest of the.
If you'd like.
The rest of the articles. What is that?
Look at the chairman. And there's no number attached, so I can't help you.
I was going to say, huh, yeah.
My number's printed everywhere.
Yeah, it's, uh, just a text that says the camera's out of focus. Eric.
Someone's watching it at home and says the camera's out of focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Moving on here, uh, is there any?
Oh, my gosh.
We got what's, uh?
We can do eleven.
Do you want to, do you have any question, do either one of you two have questions on any of the other articles down as far as twenty, down to twenty-three?
I know, I feel like we'd just be sitting through this again.
Yeah, no.
Do you want to do these as a group?
Sure. So eleven and twelve.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, fourteen.
I mean, we basically.
Fifteen.
Sixteen, a lot of the housekeeping.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, eighteen, nineteen.
Let's see.
At least up to twenty.
Seventeen, Jennifer, do we need to, we need to do the percentage on that?
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll do eleven through sixteen?
Let's do eleven through sixteen to stat.
I'll make a motion to.
Excuse me.
Accept Articles eleven through sixteen as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve Articles eleven through sixteen as written. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, Article seventeen.
I'll make a motion to, um, on Article seventeen to, um, how do I word this, the max, to allow the maximum rate of interest, um, to be nine percent?
Set a, set a, set a rate to it?
Nine percent.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second, moved and seconded to see what interest rate the town will vote to charge on all tax rates, on all taxes. After October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and April fifteenth, two thousand twenty, the maximum rate allowed is nine percent, and nine percent is what the approved, the board will approve. Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, now, the next one already has the rate in it. I think the rest of these. So do you want to go up as far as twenty-three? Up to and including twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to, um, accept Articles eighteen through and including twenty-three as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve Articles eighteen through twenty-three as written. Discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay. And we've been through these things to.
Twenty-four is the overdraft, so we get to do that, twenty-five. Twenty-six, twenty-seven. Twenty-eight. And thirty, I'll do, what, we'll do twenty-five through thirty?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to accept Articles, oh, sorry, it's twenty-four, accept Articles twenty-four through and including thirty as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Articles twenty-four to thirty and including thirty. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Thirty. Let's see.
Can I skip thirty-two for now?
We can skip thirty-two if you wish.
Make a motion to accept Article 31 as written.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 31 as written. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we'll skip 32.
And just on 32, real quick, just to make sure you saw that line that ladies talked about, I think, when you stepped out for the fire. So the wages to be paid at the rate of time and a half on holidays, comma, that next line is new, approved in the Town of Acton's personnel policy, so there was no question about which, which days if they were out plowing and sanding, they got time and a half for.
Yep, yep, okay. That sounds, sounds good. Okay, so you still want to skip 32?
Do you want to stop there?
Um, yeah, we can stop there.
Do you have questions or stuff I can get you on 32? Do you need?
No.
Take it in some? I'll tell you that the warrant of finance made a recommendation last night to approve state rates times 15%, and they left everything else in the warrant.
Plus 15%.
Plus 15%.
You said want to know what these rates compare to those, to those rates?
I gave my sheet to.
Yeah, Elise did hand out numbers for them.
But I gave my only copy.
So do Nita.
That was Susan Meehan I gave, I gave it to, I think.
So does that make these rates lower or higher?
Lower.
These rates would definitely be lower.
Really?
Yeah.
These rates would be lower?
These rates are lower.
Than state rate?
Right.
Of plus 15, okay.
Well, I guess, I mean, not on.
No.
Not on all of them. Not on all of them.
These are higher than state rate plus 15.
That's what I meant. Acton's rates are higher than state rate plus 15.
And some of the rates that we're paying is a little lower, and some of them are rating the average, and some, I'm the one that presented this to the warrant finance committee, and that's, so everybody got copies of it. It's really, the excavators and stuff is, the rates are about the same, and some of the stuff's a little bit lower, and I don't know, that's what other towns, some other towns are doing, and it seemed to work well for them.
Yeah, I'd want to know more information on that.
So what is it? Is it something you want me to get? Are you looking for?
Yeah, I just want to see what the rates are, what the state rates.
So you want to see what the state rates times 15?
Yep. I want to match them up to what these are, because.
I'm pretty sure Michelle has it, and I know they just went up, state rates just changed, so I'll grab them from Michelle, just, yeah, just, because I know that's what she's paying out in Chaplain, so she probably.
Okay, we can't do 33 and 34, because we're still kind of questioning something there.
Right.
And 35.
Well, if the board doesn't, if the board of selectmen don't agree, I mean, I'm just going to put this out there, but if the board of selectmen don't agree with the article, then you should change the numbers in it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if we can't, if we're, if we're gonna, actually, if we're gonna leave those and go a year, I guess we're all set.
Um, yeah, with the amendment.
Yeah.
Article 33 and 34 would be with the amendment. We can do Article 35, that's not going to change.
True.
I'll make a motion to.
The amendment was the.
Well, no, I, no, I was talking about Article 32. I'm just saying, as a whole, if the board doesn't agree with these numbers, this is your warrant, so you need to put forward whatever numbers you support.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I support these numbers.
That are on here.
Yeah, this is what we passed forward, which is what we put on the, on the warrant, so.
We did vote on them the last two years.
Exactly.
Well, I didn't. I did, one year, but not the other one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see it's going down. I don't think it's, I don't think that's fair. I don't know what the, but I want to see what the numbers are, what's the difference?
I'll get them.
So, yep.
So 34 and 35 were, and 33, 34, and 35?
Yep.
Oh, no, we're gonna.
We can do 35.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to change.
We're not going to change the paving.
We're not going to change the paving, so 33, 34, 35.
33 and 34, you want to wait until we put that blurb in there to make sure it reads correctly?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve Article 35 as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve Article 35. That's just the stockpile in the Public Works Building. Okay. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
And we have the Culverts Bridge, APAT, Transfer Station, REC. I'll make a motion to approve Article 36 through and including 41 as written.
Do I hear a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve Article 36 through and including 41. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed?
42 is still the REC. Forest County Planning and Development Summitary. I'll make a motion to accept Article 42 through and including Article 46 as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve Articles 42 through and including 46.
Do you want to stop here, or?
It's up to you.
Good spot on.
We'll stop here.
Can we do a vote first?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? Nope. Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we'll stop at that one. So we still need to do 47 through 77. Okay. Okay, public hearing, road ordinance.
So the addition of that last week, need one more public hearing to meet all of our deadlines. I'm looking at May 15th, 7:00. The REC meeting, REC committee has a meeting that night at 7:30, 6:30. But if this is going to go on the warrant, you don't have a choice. The REC will have to miss it or jump in and out. They have to meet the deadline.
Okay. Okay. Is that okay with you too?
Yes.
May 15th at 7:00?
Yep.
Okay, that's a Wednesday night.
They told me it was 7:30 today. That's why I bumped it to, sorry.
Okay. Very good. Public comment? Anyone for the public?
I wrote it down because I don't speak well. I was just wondering when to see the town is going to finish the remainder of the Flat Ground Road, which was voted on on 11/26 meeting.
Yes.
Article 3. It's my understanding that the money's allotted, it will run out the end of June.
Does that money?
No, we, and this is Mike Long, just for the record.
I'm Mike Long, I apologize.
And I thought we had a conversation and we were on the same page.
We did, but, when I went back and reviewed the tape.
Right.
Article 2 was to pay the remainder that was owed on the debtors. Article 3 was to put $9,000 in now to finish the rest of the road. So that's what I'm at.
I see, I see. You're absolutely correct.
Right. So I'm wondering as to when that, right. And I didn't realize until after we got done a conversation, so I went back to review, because I make mistakes. So I was just wondering when that would be done, because the money allotted would be run out the end of June, and so. I'd like for the.
Uh, the way the warrant article is written, yes.
I think it would, yeah.
So the road commissioner on that side is?
Joe.
So your best bet would be to contact the road commissioner directly.
Well, see, the thing is, if, the road commissioner on that side was appointed, so if he's, if he was appointed, that means he's not, he's a town employee.
He is.
So should it not go through the selectmen?
No, I mean, we are, a lot of us are town employees, but the board, the board still gives them a chance to do their job before they step in.
Okay.
So if nobody's reached out to the road commissioner and said, hey, what is your timeline on this? Because, you know, that's the first step, and then you go to the board with concerns.
All right, so if I see him, and so theoretically, it should be done before the end of June.
Yes, June 30th.
Because we'll lose that money.
Right. That money will roll over into the.
It goes back into the undesigned.
All right. And the other question would be, is, is there a timeframe on fixing the potholes on the upper road? Those things are hellacious.
Who wrote that?
The Culverts.
Still Joe's.
Joe's.
Same thing. Reach out to the road commissioner. That's step one.
Yep. I have been in touch with him on the, on the potholes, so, yep.
The potholes or dips?
Potholes. There are some potholes, yeah.
Needs to be graded.
Yep.
Jeff Howes?
Hey, Jeff.
Uh, same thing as that, condition of East Shore Drive.
Yep.
The town part of it. I've listed, I know the state has a procedure for potholes to be repaired within a timely manner. I've reached out to Mr. Laterno, three phone calls dating back, the first one, April 18th. So that part of it, I have started. I've reached out to the selectmen via email. There was a discussion that it would be addressed. I just, I'm, just some brief history. I'm the road commissioner on the private part of that road, and we keep that road to a standard that I think the town should keep their part of the road to equally as nice of a standard, if not better, because, I mean, financially there's more revenue on the town part than there is the private. I'd like to find out when that's going to be addressed.
Hasn't there been some, and correct me if I'm wrong, hasn't, because I know there's been a call or two on that, and hasn't he been out there a couple of times?
Been out a few times, but it, but the fix needs to be a permanent fix now.
Right.
I mean, he's, he's done some temporary fixes based on the weather conditions we've had and whatnot, but, you know, there does need to be some permanent fixes done on that. And we are addressing that with.
For somebody like me, what causes a pothole in the first place?
Water. Water gets into a crack and it, it separates, it freezes, it thaws, causes a break in the pavement. Cars go over it, it pops the pavement out, amongst other things, but that's a simple.
So, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So basically what it needs is, it needs to be, either have some cold patch put in it and fix that way, which is still a temporary fix, or it needs to be cut out and then have some hot top put in. So, which, now we're in, we're into hot top weather now.
Which is another reason why I'm, we need to combine this paving, because I feel like a lot of, East Shore Drive isn't the only road that looks like that on District 2's side.
Oh, no, and I'm sure it's not, you know. I just, it's one of, it's pretty much the primary road in this town that I drive that the town maintains.
Yep.
So I just, and I'm getting it, being the road commissioner of the private part, I get concerns from other members on the private road, not knowing the whole layout of everything. So myself and my wife, filtering calls and inquiries that I shouldn't have to.
Right.
As, you know, a taxpayer to this town, you know, that, that to me is not what I need to do.
That actually, that was on a project list from the previous district commissioner that didn't get dealt with.
Yep.
And I believe that when, when the road, current road commissioner went out there a couple of times and tried to do some temporary fixes, when it got around, I mean, I don't want to call him on the spot, but when it got around to fixing it and getting the cold patch, wasn't there not any at some of the plants?
I did hear that.
Yeah, I think I might have heard that from the other side, but nevertheless.
Yeah, there's some, there's some out there now, so.
I just, it's, it's just frustrating.
Yep.
You know, I mean, it's, and I mean, what is the procedure to notify you of the potholes so if there is vehicle damage going forward?
Well, you notify the road commissioner to sat with.
Which, which he did.
Which he has.
I have.
Yep.
So then now, it's going to come to us.
I mean, do I, do you need locations of where they are, physical locations? I mean, I've got, I've got a whole half a sheet here of house addresses of vicinity of them. So what it, I mean, I need to know where we need to proceed with this, because.
Well, we're going to talk to the road commissioner. I'll talk to the road commissioner and see if he gets out. I believe he was talking about getting out there this week, and.
Is that going to be done at this public forum? Is that a private conversation?
No, I'll have a private conversation with him.
Yeah.
I think it should be a public conversation. So if other residents of the road are listening to this recorded conversation, they can hear that as well. I mean, I don't want to put any, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot here, but, you know, since April 18th, the first conversation, and then so on, so forth, with the conditions of yesterday of 65 degrees.
Yep.
I don't see why certain roads that are in such disrepair can't take precedence over other things that are being done. I know he runs a private business as well.
Right, as does.
As does probably, yeah, and as does a lot of people that reside in this town, but, you know, I mean, there is a scheduling thing, so knowing when the weather is good and bad, so I just taking the voice for everybody, so. That's all I have.
Have a conversation with him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I hate to do this, but I'm going to, Joe, District 1, District 2, hmm? Would you like to address this, please? I mean, we know the road needs some attention, so.
We do. And I have gone out there several times, temporary fixes, obviously, with the crushed stone. It, it took the curse off it for a while. Just, there was a lot of water in the holes, excuse me. And we did go out last week. We did put some patch in the bigger holes. I just wanted to see how it was going to hold up where it was, it just wasn't ideal conditions. We are going out tomorrow, and your road will be patched by the end of the week. And as a long-term plan, the road does need to be repaved. We know that.
Oh, Joe, while you're up here, do you have any idea when you'll get to Flat Ground?
We'll put it on the schedule and it'll, it'll get done before.
Did you get a copy of the, the?
It just, there's so.
No, he probably doesn't, he probably doesn't know much about what's going on with Flat Ground.
No, I know.
We'll fill him in on Flat Ground.
Oh, okay.
It's just, there's so many things that.
Couldn't figure, I couldn't figure out when.
With District 2, there's.
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
And we do know.
We know.
It's, there's a lot of things that need to be done in a short amount of time.
With not enough money.
You know, and obviously, if you watch Channel 6 News, there was a thing on there last week about potholes and mains.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not just East Shore Drive. It's New Bridge, it's this. It, you know, there's several roads.
Yep.
It's a mess.
We know.
We're trying.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, by the end of the week, it'll, it'll be addressed.
I'll be there, Mom.
Okay, sounds great. Any other public comment? No? Okay. Announcements. Okay, we have a water walk. The Wakefield Opera House, that is May 8th, 2:00 PM. The comedy show now at the school, May 10th at 6:30. Would you like to discuss Fancy Nancy again?
I was going to say, can you say Fancy Nancy?
Can you say it?
Uh, the Fancy Nancy Tea Party on Saturday at 10:00 AM. Bring your fancy on.
There you go. Public hearing, 7:00 on the 13th. That's the road commissioner and road committee ordinance. Public hearing, 7:00, May 15th, the road ordinance. EMA position is closing on the 20th. That's the deadline to apply for the EMA director. So, anything else?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to call Cindy up and find out if she said, she said she found some errors in the town report.
True.
And was wondering if she could let us know what page that was on.
No, I told you next week. I think everybody can look. We've had the book.
Come up to the mic, please.
We've had the book for a year. I found them, but I think everybody else should have found them too.
And it was, but just take a look in your yellow book. I mean, it's last year's book, so it's not going to affect anything now. But I brought it up because I feel we need an audit with another company. The difference in price was only $400.
Go back and discuss the auditor.
Please let me, will you please let me finish?
Nope, I'm not. I'm not. We've already discussed the auditor. We've approved the auditor.
And nothing would change your mind, no matter what?
Nope. Nope, we have a different person doing our auditing this year.